All right. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. So if everybody would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our first responders. Everywhere.
The Queen.
God save the Queen.
And the King.
Thank you. Please have a seat. I'm going to call the meeting of Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. And I'm announcing that this meeting is being recorded via Zoom. And the recording will be uploaded to the township website to the, excuse me, the township's YouTube channel for viewing at a later time. Prior to this meeting this evening, we met an executive session to discuss personnel issues. The Township Yard Sale is Saturday, September seventeenth. The map can be picked up with Township Building or downloaded. And that will be available just a few days before the sale. And it's not too late to sign up. So make sure you do. The Pipeline Task Force and the Futurist Committees are seeking new members. Please contact the Township Manager Derek Davis or fill out an ABC Volunteer Form located on the Forms and Applications page of our website. This is a little bit of a different meeting, so we're going to be doing the budget tonight. So before we get into the mix of that, just there are no public hearings. There are no emergency reports, financial report, approval minutes, or treasurer's report. There is no old business to attend. So we're going to skip over the old, the, uh, the business of the, of the budget for the moment and go to standing issues and projects. Derek, do you want to update us on the Hershey's Mill project?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Still. Still in the process of finishing up some punch list items. Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong since you're here, but other than that, not too much of an update. We, as I said in the last meeting, it held up pretty well, actually extremely well in the three and a half inches we had of storm. Last time, last week. So again, some, some punch list items to finish up, but other than that, we're, we're almost there at the end of it.
Great. As far as the Milltown Dam project is concerned, I don't have any updates. I'm disappointed with the. Timing of things. Derek, have you had an update from Kirk Rider?
I have not.
I have a quick comment on and a question on the Hershey's Mill Dam project. This past week, I had the privilege of bicycling on the Henmuppin Trail from Moose, Delaware down to Rehoboth. About a mile of that trail is galvanized deck bridging through marshland, which is absolutely beautiful.
How was that on your bike?
What's that?
How was it on your bike?
It was great. It was, it was fine. It was, it's kind of a different service, but the surface, but it was, you know, the superstructure was galvanized steel. And it, it looked really nice and the. Railing was a little different. It was, uh, it was a trekwood style with metal. Yeah, cables in it. Actually, it looked like, uh, almost like a chicken wire, but bigger gaps and it's a. But it was, it was really attractive and it, and it looked really nice through there. The question I have is, you know, we have the grasses growing up through the deck on that. How are we going to manage that as far as, is that going to be cut down? Are we going to do something underneath to just sort of growth of how's that going to work?
So Mark and I have actually been in touch with the landscape architect, Peter Simone, and he is away from the office right now. And we kept harping on, we need a maintenance schedule because we don't want to touch anything until we know exactly what we have to do. So he said by the end of the month, Mark, September thirtieth, September twenty-ninth, he's going to have a maintenance schedule. And he said that kind of lays out everything we need to do from a public works perspective.
Are there any other matters that the board have to have? No other matters?
Well, let me just come back on one, one thing, one item very briefly inquiry on the Hershey's Mill Dam. Are we in process with, I guess it would be Panoni to evaluate that structural element of the wall or what have you that was brought up? Remember the one resident brought it up here that there was, felt there was deterioration in the wall. You and I have talked about that. And we were going to have. A structural engineer from Panoni take a look at that to verify that it was, it's historical. There's no further degradation or it's stable, what have you. What, what were we going to do?
Well, we were looking at initially. Through the project, if that wall was even touched. And that was kind of our initial, but finding out, talking to Mark and some of the other people involved. The wall that was spoken of at that meeting, it was never touched during the project at all. So I mean, we can do that if the board so wishes, but we didn't, we didn't touch it during the project. So we didn't feel it was any kind of merit.
I'm with you then. If that, that was the case, I think you've said that, Mark. I lost track of that. There was no need to spend three or $500 on something that we didn't touch that has just historically been there and it's not of, of our. Any impact that we had during the project. Okay. So it, it is what it is historically, but not, uh, nothing associated with anything that we've altered or interfered with. Okay.
And I'll just note.
Yeah. People.
So, so anyone who didn't hear on Zoom, Mark just said that they're, they're going to be installing post rail fence. For a portion of the. The ramp going down into the wetland area to prevent people from walking on the private property there. Also, I'm going to mention that it looks, it looks great. You paved it. It looks terrific. So thank you for that. And I know that you said you were going to wait for a while to stripe it. We're just going to kind of wait and see how things settle. Right.
Okay, good. That all sounds positive.
Um, I do have one issue under any other matter, and that was a resident brought up the fact that we have still not had any type of. Ribbon cutting or celebration of the Mary Dell Pond project, and it is completed. And a resident did ask me to mention again that they would like to see kind of a cap on this and they'd like to be, basically be able to show it off. So is it something that we can?
I think the best step forward is to maybe get the residents' contact and then talk to Jason.
Okay, great.
See if we can set that up.
And then just invite us to attend and hopefully.
Couple of those can go.
Couple of, it's a beautiful setting now.
It is.
Again, kudos to Public Works and Mark for making that happen. And with the, with the Mary Dell Pond folks.
Yep.
Input.
There are no liaison reports and there is no correspondence of, or reports of any interest. Hey, Cody. All right. So that would have been the shortest meeting on record. So Dave. I think you've got some, some, some explaining to do.
Explain it to do.
Get away, Dave.
All right.
All right. So here is our two thousand and twenty-three preliminary general fund budget. We're going to focus on the general fund budget tonight. I will touch on the capital fund because it's funded by the general fund. Other than that, our, our next budget meeting, I will do all the other funds and specifically projects, et cetera, and dig into all those. And then we'll have a final wrap up session, a meeting after that. So I wanted to highlight. Pretty much just trying to show the revenues and expenses over the years and how revenue has not kept pace quite with expense. Especially in the most recent years. So inflation from December two thousand and twelve cumulatively is nearly twenty-five percent. Expenses have increased for the township roughly over the same amount during that timeframe, which is expected. So through strategic resource planning, past budget surpluses were put into our operating reserve. You can see on the graph that spike for the general fund revenue, the expense in two thousand and fourteen. About two and a half million dollars between two thousand and thirteen and fourteen was put away. So it shows as an expense and that actually created the operating reserve account at that time. For about two and a half million dollars. Since then, we've also begun an infrastructure sustainability fund. And we've allowed East Goshen to continue funding our capital reserve fund for new and replacement capital costs. Continue supporting our first responders, Wego Police, Goshen Fire Company, Malvern Fire Company, and our Good Fellowship EMS. And we get to borrow money at a lower cost as a triple A bond rated municipality. You can see the jump.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. The big jump that I wanted to point out is the, the line breaking over time. In inflation and show that cumulative rise, ten years, it was about a 10% growth over ten years. And then within two years, it rose another eight percent. And then just in the last year plus, it is gone another additional six percent. So that's what we're dealing with right now. And it's not just us. It's the police, it's the fire, it's, it's every other township as well. Who's having to go out and pay for services and, and buy supplies to do all of the things that we normally do.
And Dave, I just want to interject one other related statistic. Since two thousand and four, which was the last increase in the tax property of millage. The aggregate inflation rate, as I've seen it and reviewed it today with the, the source. Has, has been forty-seven point two seven percent total aggregate increase in inflation since the last tax increase.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. You can go to the next one. So I wanted to highlight since two thousand and nineteen, just show the past few years actual. Plus our two thousand and twenty-two budget where we're projecting right now as of an August close. And a two thousand and twenty-three preliminary budget. This is just a, a projection for twenty-three. There's a number of options that we have that we'll explore tonight. And it won't be finalized tonight, but we'll have a good discussion hopefully. So you can see we've been able to be very close to a net even on two thousand and nineteen. Almost a break even again, a slight surplus in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, we actually were able to have a slight surplus. And that was after we put away nearly five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars into an operating reserve, which had been transferred into. It was basically split and started the infrastructure fund and we put a little bit more into capital. And then we also put some more into the infrastructure sustainability. So the reason we were able to do that, which is probably unsustainable, is because of. EIT was six hundred thousand dollars higher than originally budgeted for that year, twenty-one. And the real estate transfer tax came in about three hundred thousand dollars higher. So that nine hundred thousand dollars allowed us.
Twenty-one? Can you say that again?
Yeah, two thousand and twenty-one actual versus budget. We were, we were about nine hundred thousand dollars higher in revenue than budget. Then you can back out the two hundred for the, the Wego. We just forecasted incorrectly. Thought it would be revenue came in as a reduced expense instead. So pretty much that, that seven hundred thousand dollars, our expenses were almost spot on.
Yeah.
But when you look at the revenue, that blip of what we had budgeted versus where we came in is what allowed us to have that flexibility to put that money away.
And a bit of an anomaly. And as you recall, then we, as a, as a board, we discussed what we could do with that and put it into funds that were. You know, in a value to, to.
Especially for the, yep, especially for the future projects that we're, they're going to talk about tonight and some of the big issues that we'll see coming up.
Yeah.
But I wanted to highlight that that two thousand and twenty-one looks less sustainable to me today. Because of the aggressive forecasting for revenue that I believe I've started with, with this budget. So we're currently at a seven hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred dollar deficit projected, but we can work on that. Go to the next one, please. So as a percentage of our revenues, by far nearly fifty percent of it is our earned income tax. It's. We've seen it grow over the last few years. Two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, it was kind of flat. Two thousand and twenty-one, it just exploded. And we had three years of back delinquent data that was provided to Keystone. So the Keystone was able to collect much more delinquent taxes than they had been previously. I did get on a call with the tax collectors of Chester County today. It was a Zoom call and they are. We're still projecting a little bit higher this year, which we are seeing come in our coffers as well. But, and they should have another file. It was a very timely this year. So usually there's a lot bigger delay in who's supplying them the file. Now, I'm not sure which organization it is, but they get. That data and they got it quicker this, uh, more quickly this year to start the year. So that has driven the, a lot of the collection increase. So they had two thousand and twenty delinquent that they were able to access earlier. That plus an aggressive stance on the two thousand and twenty-one was allowed to, uh. To start collecting much more than we've seen in the past. So we're keeping pace with, um, almost keeping pace with two thousand and twenty-one. And that's why, uh, even though earned income taxes is pretty difficult to forecast. You can look at it historically, but it's really driven a lot by the demographics, number of employers, who's moving into the township. Who's retiring or moving away depends on how much they're making. So the labor market's involved, your demographics, and age of your population. And how many people are making what they call earn income that we can actually get a half a percent from. So our current mill is one point two five, and this is really the only source of income that we are able to control. That's about eighteen percent of our total revenue. So it's not the biggest lever, but it could make a big difference. For every point one mill, the average in the township would increase revenue about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. And the average resident would pay about twenty-five dollars a year.
Per ten.
Yes. Uh, the real estate transfer tax goes up and down. We've, um, I think I've budgeted fairly aggressively to start off with. I'm assuming, which we've done in the past five years, except for one year, about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of property selling. Whether it's commercial or residential, I'm not making that dividing line anymore. It used to be just forecast residential and commercials gravy. It looks to be an easier way to forecast it if we just say the total dollars, because as the prices appreciate, it's a lot easier to. Whether it's a town home that's selling or a million dollar property or QVC, place like that or Swiss Farms, it's a lot, it's a lot easier to forecast it. And to know where we missed it if we do. Um, we've seen a boom in twenty-two for permit fees. Um, I hope that continues. And that's one of the options that we have to, to be a little bit more aggressive in our budgeted revenue. I wouldn't say it's sandbagging, but I, I'm waiting for the bottom to drop out of all the permits that are getting applied for. We did change the fee schedule slightly last year. But, but we've had a record number of permits this year and in twenty-one, it was a record number that year. So it's continuing.
Dave, let me ask you a question on that because. While the budget for twenty-two, this is a small, much smaller percentage than the, the taxes and the local enabling taxes that we were just talking about. But smaller percentage, but not insignificant. The budget for twenty-two is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. At this stage, you're projecting another hundred thousand dollars in permits before the end of the year. Uh, you have a projected three hundred and twenty thousand.
Which page are you going?
This is page two of eleven of the actual budget. For this year. Your project, the, under public safety building permits. Uh, you're, you're projecting, the budget was two hundred and twenty thousand.
Yes.
You're projecting three hundred and nineteen thousand.
Yes.
So we, we, you must know there's some things in the pipeline. Are you just basing that on the trend month to month?
That's primarily year to date. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that it goes back down to average for the remainder of the year. And this is driven primarily by year-to-date permits.
Okay. All right.
So that's why I think there could be some wiggle room in my two seventy-five number. Twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars that it, that we could see, yeah.
Just to add to the, that probably has the, the most potential as well, because they're. Compared to other townships, which there's also a lot of things we actually don't charge fees for, which we probably should for administrative tasks. So for instance, for an instance, you know, zoning certification right now.
We don't charge any for?
Well, we just started, but it, it's actually pretty low still. So I forget the exact amount. I don't want to quote it. So there's that. There's, you know, applications right now for home-based businesses that we have to do that right now. Don't have a true fee attached to it. So.
Yeah.
There's some growth beyond just, you know, more, more of the same. There's also some things we're not capturing. That we should be capturing when you compare us to other municipalities in the area.
And that's not, not just to accumulate revenue for the sake of revenue, but that's based on the service we provide.
It's based on the administrative effort that we are, we are.
Yeah, when we come up with prices for those things, it's usually myself, it would be the township manager, Mark Miller. Jason for Parks and now Dwayne, um, I've got already digging into the current schedule.
Yeah.
And see, you know, how much does it really cost? You know, how many times does Mark have to come out and inspect the lateral store? You know, is it, it used to be once, now it's three, four times, you know, different days. That plus the fuel costs going up, you know, you got to take all that into consideration.
Yeah. And that's a smaller chunk of what we're seeing in the projected deficit for next year, but it's still, it's reflective of. You know, paying for what our service costs are. And that's, that's just one part of the equation of this.
Yeah, it just really stands out, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'd much rather be that we're paying the, the user who's. Who's going to see the benefit from it is the one who is paying for it rather than divided amongst eighteen thousand residents.
And subsidizing that cost.
Completely wrong.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I want to, I want to see those user rates.
Reflect.
Reflect the actual.
Yeah, it's similar to the sewer rates being collected by Portnoy.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's go on to the next one.
I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. It's, we've talked about it last year, similar revenue trends. I'm still showing EIT just about flat with two thousand and twenty-two projected. That's the big thing to take away. Almost everything else is basically flat. So really, I'm not seeing a lot of areas that are. I mean, we're, we're recognizing good growth this year, um, which is keeping, almost keeping pace. Primarily because of EIT and the real estate transfer tax that's keeping us in line with last year. But we have seen all of our costs go up and then the big problem is going to be next year with the cost increases. So we're going to try and attack it from both ends, both revenue and expense, but you can move on. So here's the same, this is the, the data that was graphed. This is the numeric representations. Just trying to point out, uh, it's sorted high to low from the total two thousand and twenty-three budget number. Earned income tax at the top down to some fines and things we get from the district court and we go at the bottom. Primarily, uh, the differences are driven. So I called out interfund operating transfers. We had lower sewer recharge. That was because the insurance was paid in twenty-one for twenty-two. And we collected that money in twenty-one, not twenty-two. So the budget was off a little. I think we're still going to be fine because of our other revenue sources. But I think it should come back to normal on a regular payment schedule for insurance this, this year. We've also got the spray irrigation loan, which was a service departmental earnings. The reason that that's coming down from four twenty-nine and twenty-two to three fifty-nine is the spray irrigation loan that we were getting. It was twenty-five thousand dollars. That is complete. So we know, get, no longer get that, but we no longer pay for the loan. Um, and we had an unprecedented building permit increase from twenty-one to twenty-two as well. And I talked about that on the last slide. We've got, uh, interest rates are up. The average at Pliggett right now for prime is about twenty basis points. M and T last year at the beginning of the year was, uh, one basis point. So we're finally going to get some interest on all of our balances. I've transferred them all over to. Only enough for operating cash flows out of our checking accounts and everything else is coming out of Pliggett to get us the best interest rates. I also put some in a short-term interest. It's almost like a, like a CD, but it's, yeah, just a two or, two or three months.
Yeah.
We know we're going to get it back in time to pay bills, but we get to maximize the interest rate on it.
Dave, on, on interest earnings, I note, um, page one of eleven. Of the general fund, uh, full spreadsheet under interest earnings. Obviously, interest rates are going up. But, um, uh, the projection for the end of this year is just under twenty-three thousand. But you've brought us up to almost ninety-one thousand for next year. Do you think that that is optimistic? Or, and I, I heard what you just said about the Pliggett's up to zero point two zero now percent. Still seems miniscule, but better than point zero one. Do, do you see that as a, as an aggressive, uh, projection for the twenty-three budget under the interest at ninety thousand or? Hopeful or, um, is that something we, we might think about being scaling back? How do you feel about that? And it's tough to predict.
I think it's okay. And I think it's primarily, I, I kind of misspoke. The twenty basis points is their lowest tier, which is just, um.
Oh, just the bait. It's not the.
It's not the prime.
Prime.
Their prime is one point two.
Oh, they got.
They're over, they're over one point, one point, one percent. And then, um, some of their short-term notes now are going for close to two percent. So if I can do a combination of that, keep our cash flow going. I think that this might even be a little conservative.
Okay. All right. Good, good. I'm glad to hear you say that. All right. Thanks. Yeah, I, I didn't see anything in a quick glance. There's a difference, but you gave us a.
That I had the wrong graph. David pointed out to me. I had the expense graph on the budget. Pie chart.
Oh, I see that now.
Why you have this handout?
Yeah, now I see it. Now I see it. Cause I only looked at the numbers on the side. And I didn't look at the actual pie chart, which is the most fun to look at when you, you know, all the color.
Well, so some of the, some of the only revenue. I'm currently forecasting two thousand and twenty-three revenue flat with, uh, two thousand and twenty, twenty-two projected revenue. A little bit lower, two percent than two thousand and twenty-one. Um, some of the current revenue risks in our twenty-three projection that I, that I think are possible. Are if retirements, more retirements offset wage growth, that could drive EIT lower, but with the better performing job market. And one six.
Eight, David, line on the right?
Nope, go back one. Keep going. One more. There you go. Yep. So their EIT is uncertain, um, is basically my takeaway from that. But, um, I think the number I have in there now is achievable. Noting that they are going to get another file and they anticipate getting it early for twenty-one. This coming year. So hopefully the trend that we see in EIT continues next year. I'm kind of counting on that in our current budget. The housing market, uh, we've seen it slow down a little bit. Supply could shrink more and borrowing costs could continue to rise, which is what's being projected. That could slow down our, um, current forecast of real estate transfer tax. It's a little bit aggressive versus what we've done budget-wise in the past, but it still is, um. I think it's still achievable.
Okay.
Demand for building permits decreases. Um, we don't see any sign of that slowing down. And we could also offset that by reevaluating our fee schedule, which we'll do as we get closer to January.
So you kept that pretty much as twenty-two, no change really?
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
So the budgeted expenses. Again, sorted from high to low for twenty-three. The majority of ours, similar to EIT for revenue is public safety, forty-two percent of our current budget. That's a ten percent increase in police, fire and EMS collectively. And that makes up sixty percent of the total expense increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. Uh, I think that's important to note because of the services that public safety provides. And the, the minimal control that we have over that expense. We have a piece of the police commission. And we work hand-in-hand with, uh, Goshen Fire and we've seen the struggles of, uh, Good Fellowship as well as Malvern. Costs are increasing. They're pushing their capital fleets longer than they have in the past. Similar things that we're seeing at the township. To try and stretch those dollars out to meet their current budgets, um, which could end up sacrificing some, uh, long-term financial health.
Yeah, I'd like to interject, um, for a moment with the board, um, and share that, uh, Thursday. Uh, we have a Wego. Finance Committee Budget Meeting on the Wego Budget. Uh, I'll be meeting with, uh, uh, one of the supervisors, Tom Foster from West Town. To go over the budget, see where West Town stands on things. I would note that in the current Wego, uh, preliminary proposed budget. Of course, overall, there is, is Dave. Of course, overall, there is, is, as Dave mentioned, I, I, I listed here is a, there's a four hundred and forty eight thousand dollar increase in public safety. Including the WIGO police um uh budget, which is up. Um, three hundred and forty six thousand dollars or eight point four seven percent, and there, that includes requests for three new full time officers. Totalling two hundred and six thousand dollars, um including one SRO, school resource officer. And you can net out of that, um our current discussions with the school district is seventy five, but there's also one new office staff administrative position. I don't know what the total number of that is. Uh, so those are things we're gonna be talking about, and that will come back to us as a board. In addition, under public safety, our contribution to the volunteer fire company uh for projected for twenty three. Is up ninety one thousand dollars or twenty two percent. So those are things we're gonna have to take a look at as well, uh there are. Uh, we, we, I think as a board, look at these as essential services, but we um. Obviously still have to look at the dollar amounts associated in the increases and what, what works with our budget within the, the confines. Uh, it's confined, so I just shared that with you that we're gonna be taking a very close look and with our partner on Thursday, and we'll be getting back to you on that.
Um, just so you know, um I, as the commission received um the budget request from the chief. Um, a couple of weeks ago at the last meeting, and I have provided the supportive material. To Dave today so that you have something additional to look at before your uh financial meeting.
Okay, alright, good.
So you'll have some supportive document as to.
Oh, you're gonna, Dave is gonna, David is gonna attend that.
David is gonna attend as well, right?
Yeah, I'll scan it and.
And so, so Dave is gonna scan, scan that in and send it out to every, well, to everybody actually would be helpful.
Yep.
Um, but you'll be receiving that maybe tomorrow. Um, that has the supportive documentation from the chief as to what she's looking for in each of these uh asks, just so you know.
Thanks, Michelle.
Uh huh. Dave, while you're at it, do you want to send to the board the request I had for what the chiefs asked for in the last couple of years?
Sure, that's a good idea, thanks.
Oh, alright, good, good.
Yeah, Cody, when I wanted to see what did she ask for, I went back three years, I think we did. Oh yeah, I think Kathy went a little overkill. Gave us five years worth and then um the dollar amounts associated with those and whether they were granted or not.
So, we know that there's a shed, an additional shed that they've asked for, and then there is three, three different pieces of software. And we've had some discussion about the crime um.
Crime, crime watch.
And the.
No, not, the, their subscription.
Software.
It's, there's, that software has, that has to be paid for. So that was just, that was just a month, that was just a yearly subscription, but we did, we did um.
You're comfortable with.
I got, I, I had a demonstration. Um, the next, uh later that next week, and um I was comfortable with making that expenditure.
Okay.
Happen. That said, um, the shed is currently listed as thirty thousand dollar request.
Yeah.
But West Town has setbacks and their ordinances that the um building, that the WIGO building has to. To go through. So I don't think that they'll be requesting zoning variance, but um they do have certain setbacks and requirements that they have to meet. So the building will not be as big as the chief would initially have liked it to have been, so I've um. Indicated to Dave that that number could potentially come down significantly um to shave off a little bit here and there.
Is that gonna be a pre, just?
It's gonna be, uh, it's, it's, I don't know that it's gonna be prefab, she hasn't, I didn't check.
Not just.
To see what it said in the packet, um and Dave has the packet, but um the thing is, it isn't, it's intended to be an evidence shed.
Yes.
The uh, the current evidence shed. Is in disrepair, I personally was afraid to step both feet into it and be inside of it with anybody else in the shed. Um, the floor was that.
Week.
Yeah, I was not comfortable with that.
Okay, so I'm glad.
There, there is a need for it, you can, and you can, you can, you can feel the breeze from uh, from, from inside of it.
Madam Chairman, I just have one more question for Dave here.
Hmm.
I, I don't have that in front of me, but I think the total increase that the chief is asking, since we're on the topic, is about. What is that, sixty, uh, like three hundred and fifty thousand in increase, right?
Four, four. I had, I had um, Cody, I had down.
Like, I don't have in front of me, so that's why I'm.
It's three forty six, two sixteen was what I saw, but on the WIGO budget, I saw a different number.
Yeah.
So on page nine, I have uh the detail of all of the fire and police. So it depends on a, with the WIGO budget, if you're looking at um. Just the contribution or also the interest in principal and capital contributions.
Um, here, here, the uh total request for, the chief's total request for two thousand twenty three is. Four hundred and thirty six thousand, five hundred and eighteen ninety two um above what has been. Um, budgeted for, for two thousand twenty two.
Four thirty five, say it again, I'm sorry.
Four hundred and thirty six thousand, five hundred and eighteen.
Thank you.
And ninety two cents.
And I just have a question on that, Dave, that's like, I think that though is ninety six thousand dollars of that roughly is because of additional fuel costs, is that correct?
Fuel, right.
So one fourth of her request is based off of just the increase in fuel.
Well, I'm glad that was brought up, cuz I missed that today. Also, according to the projections on the WIGO budget. It's not something, it's not an expense you could totally wipe out, because if you wipe out that expense, you have to add more to overtime. Because some of the personnel goes away request, so. You'd have an additional two hundred and eight thousand dollars, I think that was the, this is all version one, obviously, but.
Right.
It would be based on not getting personnel requests. So you'd have two hundred and eight thousand based on more overtime and.
The chief eliminated the part time.
Correct.
Yeah, so the part time goes away, full time replaces it, plus the SRO, plus the admin, plus the building, plus the software. Plus the increase year over year for the uh fuel, those are the biggest.
Right.
Increases. And I think there's also a ten percent additional pension. Buy in.
Right, um and Kathy is currently working on version two, she's hoping to have it for you for Thursday.
Okay, there is a, a note here that speaks to that, Cody, on the, on the WIGO budget, which I don't think you have.
Yeah, I don't have in front of me now.
Here it says here, chief's total request. Four thirty six, five, eighteen, if nothing is approved, we can subtract the four thirty six, but add back two hundred and eight thousand. Uh, for part time fill-ins. Uh, and we remove the seventy five thousand dollar light item, un, line item under receipts, which has to do with the school district and the SRO, so. There's a lot of um.
Moving parts.
Lot of nets and back and forth here uh before we finally settle out on this, and I think the base, the, the initial thing we need to do is. With our partner and us get comfortable with the um request. Wine items, and uh one, once we get comfortable with that, then these numbers should uh start to clarify. Real, the actual total added number will clarify.
Yeah, I need to understand, or I would like to understand better their um, the staffing and need for overtime versus part time. Um, I don't really, because if you look at the projection for this year. We're projected to have a surplus.
Surplus of what?
In the police.
In the police budget.
The other thing is the salary line on this with the five percent. If we don't know what that's, number's gonna be actually.
And then Dave, so um you, you guys will find this out on Thursday. If the chief hypothetically, let's say she got in a perfect world, she got both those full time officers. Would the overtime costs, what is that, is that?
That's wrong, we don't know.
That's, it's a good question, because when I did an original calculation on the uh part time officers, they, they equal.
What'd you say, four?
Um, on the full time officers, they equaled seven point two full time equivalencies if, with no overtime. So if you only replace them with two officers, you're not covering the necessary hours, and I, I, I need to flesh that out with the, with the committee and the chief.
Yeah, cuz this, this number of, uh, this number of, we have to add back in two hundred and eight thousand dollars for part time fill-ins. I don't know what that, how that, that's the number you're saying, I don't know what that, how that.
Which is translating to overtime.
That's seven point two is when we had a full complement, I think of nine or.
Twelve.
There, that's right, I think we had twelve at the time. So that, that seven point two is promulgated on twelve part time officers.
And for anybody that's listening, one of the big issues with the uh police right now, and the way the legal organization has worked and staffed. Has been to use a component of part time, and it's been very difficult um hiring. Uh, part timers that are gonna stay and not jump for full time positions, they get trained and then they get uh jumped to another department. And just finding the right fit of individuals that wanna serve that are qualified in a part time capacity. And have a reasonable tenure to justify the training and the um. You know, there's a whole process. It's, it's created, as the chief has shared with us over the last couple of years, few years. A very daunting challenge, and that's what's precipitated some of this business of adding new full time officers. Ostensibly moving to a full time department without a, a part time component. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts at, at this time. Sorry about that, Dave.
Oh, no, no problem.
Sorry.
That's what, that's what we're here for. Uh, this is just another representation showing um the biggest piece, public safety, how uh the jump from twenty two to twenty three. Uh, when that's sixty percent of your increase, it's pretty obvious to see why expenses are outpacing revenues. And go to the next.
Nine, number nine.
Number nine. So similar to um the revenue trends sorted by twenty twenty three budget costs, um I did twenty three budget versus twenty twenty two projection. And you can see the ten percent for public safety. Four point four million dollars of that is police in that total budget. We've got the detail of all of that down below, there's all the different contribution levels through the past years. As well as the police and the interest in loans that we've been paying. Uh, we also pass allow, pass alarm revenue for fire alarms, um what's collected, we passed through in December, back to Goshen Fire. Um, for the false alarm calls that they've had.
Yeah.
We've got in this an assumed six and a half percent medical uh for township employees, uh an increase. That's driving the number from six forty seven up to six hundred and ninety.
Now, that's just an estimate, we haven't heard from Divid at this point in time.
Have not heard from him, hope to hear either this month or very early in October.
And have you looked at any of the trend or any of the trends generally that they're talking about, the health, health?
I called them and talked to them, and they, they said you could use five to eight percent, and I said, alright, I'll use six and a half.
Okay.
It's the best guess we've got so far.
Yeah, we'll be here for service sometime between twelve and seven.
Right. But the worst part is, is this increase in medical, as David pointed out earlier, is year after year after year. So that's why I wanted to kinda highlight that that, in addition to um. To working with some of the public safeties and unions and things that we've, we've got some, some costs that are steadily increased annually, year after year. No matter what kind of uh expenses we try and damper down.
Yeah.
And split pennies wherever we can, we try and get in all the service contracts, review all of that. Um, gone out to multiple insurance carriers and uh, you know, you name it, we're, we're looking at it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the prior, the big thing for um parks is uh the capital purchases, that would be the increase, it's our share that was. Uh, approved for the pickleball court, tennis courts, and um, they have a sixty two K match grant coming in. Uh, and then the playground improvement and um fencing, which is probably twenty K as well.
Second grant reflected in revenue in the budget?
It's not, it'll be in capital.
Okay, that's right.
And can you tell us with, does that include the um? Potential pocket park improvement stuff that we've discussed?
Pocket park is ten thousand in here.
Okay.
Just kind of a placeholder without knowing, I talked to Mark a little bit about what people might, might want, and I know we're talking with Derek and Jason. It was kind of on hold until we figure out.
Right.
Do they really want it, and what is it that's needed? How big do we need to worry about that?
Well, let me ask a question though, um, under parks, I, it, it's listed as twenty three budgets, five hundred and twenty five. Um, thirty three percent increase, but ninety five thousand is capital purchases, so. Uh, is that net? Uh, five twenty five uh or is, is five twenty five? Inclusive of that ninety five, but it's gonna be paid for, that ninety five is gonna be paid for out of the capital fund, I'm not, I'm a little confused there.
No, this, it has sixty, sixty to sixty five thousand would go from general fund to capital.
Oh, and it's an interfund transfer.
Yep, okay, okay. And the five twenty five includes the full ninety five thousand.
Okay.
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 Any other questions on this one?
Um, what are the, what are the biggest line items under the park department? Do you have that?
Camp's gotta be one of them.
It is, uh, let's see.
I mean, what are we really paying for it is, I mean.
Is it on page eight of that?
That includes, includes salary too, that, that number two is, doesn't it, Dave?
It does, um, this year we only had part of like a half year of a second program, a program coordinator to assist Jason.
Yeah.
Um, and we also got um Jason's projecting a lot more revenue coming from the silver program, they've got more trips. More classes line up, uh, the, the interest in people being starved during COVID for coming to the township in the park to do. Things is just snowballed.
Yeah.
Um, it's really, I, I think we got somebody to help him right at the right time.
Yeah, you know, I was just gonna say that, that I, and uh Jen, I think it is, it's.
Jess.
Jess is, really seems like she's melded with Jason and, and has, you know, jumped right in and, and uh.
Well, I'm, I'm, I. I know that there's a lot of money that's raised for the park department, and there are a lot of, a, a lot of these programs are self pay. So the residents are paying for at least some component of it. Are they not paying for the entire component of the program, Dave, or?
What's free, in other words?
Yeah, I mean, I don't. Uh, what is?
Discount.
What's the deal with, like, are, are we really, do they, does Jason really spend three to five hundred thousand dollars a year? Or is it uh kinda like a pass through cost, if you will, like, because take for instance, the Applebrook um golf outing.
Completely paid for by uh residents and the fees.
Right, but it says twenty thousand dollars, so are the residents paying for that in, in its entirety and?
As far as I know, the residents are, are in that.
Right.
Shows in a red, in his receipt.
It's just like the Friends of East Goshen Day, right, Dave?
Yeah, so I've got.
A community day.
Up on the revenue side, I've got Applebrook Golf, twenty one thousand in revenue.
So it's a complete offset.
So it's a complete offset.
Right, so there's two hundred, little over two hundred thousand coming in from all the programs.
Thank you.
Um, yoga classes, tennis instruction.
Okay.
The golf outing, the trips, ball field rentals, um, community day.
So how much, what is the amount over two hundred?
Valerie.
No, no, the two, it's two hundred, how much is coming in?
Uh, two oh two, I have in the budget.
Two oh two is.
Revenue.
What our, what our revenue is.
From all of the classes and things, yep.
Now, I mean, one approach one could take. Is if the parks program, the parks department is costing. Uh, let's see, projected for next year, five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, wow. Skip the, the, net out the ninety five thousand in capital purchases, so net that out, so you've got, you're down to uh four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we're bringing in two hundred and, two hundred thousand dollars, say. Could we? Could we increase the fees for other services to completely pay for that staff? I guess you could.
I don't know if we really can.
Well, well, you can't, because it is, it's a cost.
It is a cost.
You could.
Yeah.
So that's, that is a policy question. Do you wanna raise the fees to cover the cost of the, of the parks and recreation staff with it? What are you squinting for?
No, I don't know.
I'm just, I'm, I'm.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying.
You hit the nail on the head, Mike, cuz that's the big, that's the big split, when you look at revenue versus expense.
Right.
It's, we have the staff. They're absorbed by the township's payroll.
Right.
And then residents are paying for the services, not necessarily the staff person.
Right.
They'll pay for the summer help, they'll pay for, um, you know, the classes, the yoga class people, the instructors, all of that. But as far as.
That, that's, that's fine, I just wanna make sure that, because again, it's that user fee.
Well, yeah, it, 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 it's.
I just wanna make sure that, that there's.
I think you gotta be careful though, you, you, you start turning parks directly to a profit center.
No, I don't want it to be profit.
But I don't mean profit, but if you try to. Say every service that we're gonna offer, we're gonna, we're gonna charge for it till we break even.
With our.
At some point, taxes have to pay for things like common roads and, you know, things that we.
And operations generally.
Yeah, I, I, I.
Sure.
But, but. But, but, you know, uh, there's a balance between, could we increase fees to offset a little bit of that? But not enough to, you know, cover all our expenses and turn it into a break-even enterprise fund, basically is what my.
Right. So we're really providing a community service and you could use the word, we're subsidizing it, the cost to the good of the whole commute. At the, at the expense of the entire community for some that participate. It, it.
But there's the user, there's the user fee though, too, for, for like permits and, and codes. No, not everybody uses police, but.
Total booth on the trails. Because we have, we have a cost to the trails.
No, I, I really don't because then, then we'd have to have somebody go collect the money.
Yeah.
No.
It's a poor analogy, but it.
But the, but, but I'm just trying to say, you know, I, I want to see that, that, I want to see that the people who are using a service are actually the ones who are. Predominantly picking up the tab. I don't, I understand that we have to pay the salaries, but, but I'm not looking for it to be a moneymaker certainly, but. Again, looking for that, uh, if I don't take the yoga class, then I shouldn't have to necessarily subsid, subsidize the yoga class.
And we don't.
But you don't.
And we don't.
If you don't.
That's fine.
But you do pay for the staff.
No, we don't.
Yes, you do.
No, no, because the yoga, the yoga, no, the yoga.
Park and Rec.
Park and Rec actually pays.
Rec stay. Oh, that's what I mean, the park, you're, we're paying for the, the entire community's paying for the parks and recreation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that, that we're not subsidizing. By leaps and bounds. I don't want to be paying.
No, we're actually in a black on, as far as user fees for classes, et cetera. We're actually a little bit.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that's where we were.
Quick question for you, Dave. I forgot to ask this earlier, one of my hundred fifty questions. Uh, the, I may be pronouncing this wrong, APRE education program?
Oh, that's the B program.
Got it. Thank you. It's on you.
APRE?
APRE. Sorry, Dave. Sidetracking.
No, it's alright.
He's used John or, or in the west. Hopefully they're productive and informative.
Not always.
Sometimes vexing.
Not at all.
There you go.
Takes a village, right? So, so I've got seven hundred and forty-one thousand. I'm trying to close this gap and I want to look at all of our options. So. I've got some considerations for revenue that we could put in. Um, we could take additional monies. We have a police trust, which is uh. Prud, was prudently put away years and years and years. I don't remember what year it was, but it was put away at a time of surplus, similar to the operational reserve. Which um, has been allowed to grow and basically uh, fund a portion of the police budget every year. Um, because of its growth. So think of a mutual fund, you put it away. Say we get a ten percent return that year, I could put that hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the police budget.
Got it.
That makes sense. And it, as long as you don't use too much of it at once and you don't use it in a time when market values are down. Then you pretty much have made a part of your budget that you didn't think you were gonna make. Um, so that's one possibility. We could pay more from the police trust. Um, current. In this look right now, I've got forty thousand dollars going from the trust to um, to pay. The rest is all being funded out of general fund. Uh, another possibility is a hundred thousand increase to the EIT projection. Um, I think my twenty-two. From what I've seen so far this month as well as last month closed. Um, we could be, we could be looking for even more EIT this year. I don't know if that's gonna continue, but. I could be light a little bit on next year. So that's a possibility.
Yeah, saw that one.
Um, it's never a guarantee, but I mean, at the end of the day, you don't want to be overly conservative because. You don't want to have to in- increase a cost or a tax or cut a program if you don't really need to. Um, a hundred thousand dollars, we've got anticipated money from FEMA. Um, once we finish that out this year. Only problem is I don't know if we're gonna get it this year or if it really will be next year. So I'm not sure where, whether I should really be able to push it to twenty-three or not.
That's a call you're gonna have to make.
Yeah, I don't like counting on that. Because it's like last year's. Yeah, I guess.
Well, by a cash basis, it, it does have, it does have, but, but the problem is, is you don't know when FEMA is gonna pay. We could get it December thirtieth.
True.
And you gotta show it in this year's budget and then next year's budget goes, it's gonna have an asterisk next to it.
And it'll be an every-year-date conversation we have. Yeah, this one's not coming in.
I'd rather be conservative um, on that one as an example.
Right, that would, that would come as a windfall.
I agree. Not included next year.
Yeah, you, you've pushed an expense.
If we get it, it's a bonus then.
Yes.
Yeah, you decreased an expense. You didn't put this revenue in and then you, you get it. So we're able to do whatever we needed to do. Um, we can increase the building permit projection. I don't think there's a big problem with that. Um, based on what we've seen so far this year, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go too high. Um, twenty-five to fifty would probably be the max for me.
Agree.
Um, and then there is an anticipated renewal payment from our wireless land lease agreement of the ten-year. Ten years to come due, so we're, we're doing another seventy-five thousand dollars, um, plus a small bump up. In our monthly payment, which is uh, should be coming in October. So we will see if we get it this year or next. Similar to the FEMA money, uh. I'll have to reach out to them if we don't get it, but technically it would be in this year, not next year anyway.
Okay.
Um, and then the last option that nobody wants to talk about is a real estate tax increase. Um, and I put some examples below. Um, everything that's non-real estate tax related would be about four hundred thousand. If we didn't include the um, FEMA or the. Wireless land renewal, we could increase about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, just some examples, um, so people are aware of what the impact would really look like on a real estate tax increase. Every point one millage increase to the current tax of one point two-five. Is equivalent to roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of additional township revenue. And the average assessment throughout the whole township of a single-family dwelling is about two hundred and fifty thousand. That's how we're able to get these ballpark numbers. So that's a current average of about three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents per year that our average single-family home is paying in real estate property tax. Um, the impact of a, a point three millage increase would give us about four hundred and eighty thousand. It's about a twenty-four percent increase. Um, per year, uh, and that average increase would be about seventy-five dollars to each uh, single-family home.
Dave, do we know how much that would hit um, say um, new care departments, the owner of that?
Uh, well, I know Summit House cider novel is about a seventy-five thousand dollar assessment. Um, point three mil increase would be about twenty-two fifty.
Well, and the apartments are different, aren't they? The homeowner of the apartment pays that.
Yeah, whoever owns the apartment.
So it's, so if new care department is owned.
Do you know what the assessment on those is?
I don't know.
Okay. Right. I was just wondering.
Probably somewhere.
That's why, that's why I kind of tried to just get a slice of different parts of the township to show.
And you would expect the, the landlord to pass that on to the tenants, which is, that's just, that's the cost of.
You know.
Where should that occur?
When you're done with that, I wanted to get back to something, so go ahead.
So Summit House cider and all, it's about an average of seventy-five thousand. That would be about twenty-two fifty a year. They're paying a little under a hundred dollars. Um, Williams Way, it's about a two hundred thousand dollar average assessment. That's a point three mil increase would be about sixty dollars a year. Currently paying about two hundred and fifty each year. Villages at Hershey's Mill, one hundred to two hundred thousand average assessment. Point three mil would be about thirty to sixty dollars each year. Um, they're currently paying between a hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Now, there's a big. Discrepancy between whichever village it happens to be. Um, Bowtree, an average of about two seventy-five, that would be about eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. They're currently paying. Little under three hundred and fifty dollars each year. Uh, Clock Tower, three hundred and seventy-five thousand average assessment. Uh, that would be about a hundred and twelve. Dollars fifty cents per year and they're currently paying a little bit less than four hundred and seventy-five each year. And that's just an average look at.
Yeah.
A bunch of different ones and see what the ranges are and assess values.
Perspective. That, that's, that's good, Dave.
Did you want to?
Hey, can we go back to, remember I told you this afternoon that I, that I was looking at some of the, I was looking at some of the lines and.
Expense lines, right?
Yeah, can we go back to park, just for an example under the general fund on page nine of eleven?
Mm-hmm.
This is budget nine of eleven.
Nine of eleven, sorry.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay, so.
Parks.
Parks, up at the top, maintenance supplies. So remember I told you that I didn't understand? So we budgeted four thousand fifty-two dollars for maintenance buys. But the projection for this year is actually six thousand eighty-seven. Why would you only budget four thousand for next year if our actual was so much higher? It was higher by, by thirty percent?
Well, this is a combination of year-to-date plus budget. So depending on if we have. We could have three thousand year-to-date and we could have four thousand because of the timing. When you do a budget. When you're looking at year-to-date, it puts in month to month and it's usually based on the prior year. So.
Okay.
Depending on if maintenance supplies were bought at the end of the year, my budget number could be six thousand dollars and we've only spent eighty-seven dollars.
Okay.
So it's a combination of what we've really got, plus what's in the budget. Plus there's a, like, I could probably look at this one and see what's actually in there.
That projection for twenty-two played, played uh, was, was formed by looking at the twenty-twenty-one actual in those last few months or whatever. Maybe there were higher, higher numbers in the last few months.
Right, could be.
Of six thousand. I, and you probably touched base with Jason, said he comfortable with this number, right? If you do that stuff?
Yes.
But, but like in twenty-twenty-one, the actual was fifty-one hundred, so why would we budget a little bit higher for, for next year?
Cause I'm very conservative.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I've been, I, I appreciate.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just wondered.
Like I can see in here, I've gotten, I've got an adjustment increasing.
Threatens Jason what is necessary.
Stop buying stuff.
Jason, come into my office.
Uh, uh, part of this also for maintenance supplies is all the problems we've had at the bathrooms at the park.
Yeah.
And with the cameras going in, we're hoping that that will not have to happen again.
Yeah, that's a whole thing.
Yeah, it's been ongoing. Um, I haven't gotten a huge.
Would you want to do this, um, this expense considerations?
Exercise?
Cause uh, what, we hit the first one, two twenty K withhold. I'm gonna say an absolute no. Uh, and one of my tenants' capital reserve fund and schedule must be fully funded. The key component in a long-term effective financial management, infrastructure and asset management requires future to be planned. And funded today. I, I am not in favor of withholding any dollars. In our budget associated with capital replacement or capital purchases. We need it and we need to think forward on it. So you've heard my position.
I don't disagree.
Eric, can you pull up the additional slides? This might be a good time to. So I put together in consideration of these topics and some discussion with supervisors uh, individually. Um, a couple additional slides just to point out. Specifically capital and projects um, to show where we're at. So.
Just gonna take a minute.
Okay. So looking at the impact on um, on twenty-three. The estimated, I broke out what that difference in the increase is. Which parts we go, which parts fire, which parts medical insurance and then everything else. Um, and then going forward from twenty-four to twenty-seven, I'm assuming we go total budget is up three point seven five percent each year. And fires up the same uh, medical insurance just continues at a six and a half percent growth like we've seen. And assuming that we don't go over three percent um, in the next four years. So even if we do that and look at, okay, we balanced the budget in twenty-twenty-three, but everything costs more the next year in twenty-four. We're still gonna have, even if we look at a balanced budget, starting in twenty-four of being four hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Behind the ball. In the general.
Processing it uh, this, but twenty-twenty-three, you've got eight nineteen, is, is that?
That's the, that's the, that's.
Projected deficit?
That's, no, that is the expense increase from projected twenty-two to twenty-three.
Okay, and so in twenty-four, you're saying that from twenty-three, then the projected expense increase is less than twenty-three.
Right.
So that's a good thing, oh, but it's still cumulative.
Still, yeah, still showing there. We're still gonna have a four hundred and thirteen thousand dollar deficit each year.
Each year.
Which is again playing against that inflationary aspect that we haven't been paying attention to and, you know, and, 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 and. Um, flattening revenues.
Yeah, so I wanted to show this to show what we're up against for the next five years. Um, and then also there, if you jump to the next slide. At the same time, this is what's happened to the capital reserve fund. So. In twenty, now, a lot of this is the trail-related expenses, which were never able to be fully um, funded by grants. So you're going in twenty-twelve from six point one million to August twenty-twenty-two, we're at four point three seven zero million. That's a twenty to twenty-four percent drop.
And Cody, you had a couple question, you mentioned earlier and before the meeting started, the couple expenses you thought were not included in the budget. That are significant numbers. It had to do with either the trail or the Milltown Dam.
Yes, the, it's the next one.
Okay.
So capital projects, which would be funded by the capital fund, which is funded by the general fund. We've currently got in our projects, an alternate segment B, which is anywhere between two million and four million dollars. Um, which is unfunded currently. We've got a Milltown Dam Park, about two million dollars it's unfunded. And that's just the latest cost estimate. We haven't gotten actual bids yet.
Yeah, and that's, that's way.
That's a scary nugget.
Yeah, that, absolutely. I'm gonna bet that's gonna be close to double what that number is.
Now, we did well on Hershey's Dam, Hershey Mill Dam. Uh, Mark has been all over all of our contractors for, seems like years. And um, because of that, we think we're probably gonna have additional bond funds that don't have to be spent. Um, those could be applied to these future projects.
Still.
We also have three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in grant money, which would go back to replenish the capital reserve fund.
And I also think this is not to interrupt, but I think this is an important slide, uh, going back to the discussion of the pocket park earlier. And also, uh, you know, segment B, which, you know, I have feedback from the zoning, I'm not zoning, I'm sorry, planning commission on. That I'm, I'm gonna write a memo on at some point soon. Uh, you know, we have some idea what a pocket park could look like in Milltown, but. I kind of had that on hold because Dave and I were talking about these numbers and what's coming in, being projected. And for the projects that we quote-unquote have to do, absolutely have to do. It's looking pretty scary when you start looking at these numbers. So I don't want to get too ahead of ourselves on some of the ancillary projects that. Could potentially be put on the back burner because of what we're looking at with, with these costs, particularly obviously Milltown, Milltown Dam as well.
And we don't have a choice. We have to do the Milltown Dam Park. We don't have to do the Philly Play Trail this year.
So, so again, coming back to what I, what I shared about my, at least one of my tenants, uh, about capital reserve funding and scheduling. And that's why I was a flat no on these first two items. The, our triple-A credit rating. I, I've said here, uh, another tenant must be protect, protected and preserved with long-term effective financial management. There is a likely probability that new debt borrowing with municipal bonds may be necessary. The general or sewer within the next three to five years, maybe sooner. And maintenance of a strong credit rating can translate to tens of, or to hundreds of thousands of interest dollar savings. We can't lose our credit rating and therefore that plays into maintaining our general fund balance. Funding our capital reserve effectively with at least what we have. Um, because the likelihood of these two projects, um, we're, we're not gonna be able to afford them with what we have in our funds now. We're not gonna drain, not under my vote, we're not gonna drain the general fund balance to pay for them. And so what's ahead is probably debt financing to, to make these things happen unless there is some great grants. And we've kind of crawled wolf. I mean, we, we, we had the trail and we lost the grant, but we didn't follow it. Now they're gonna say, oh, they're, they're doing this again. Maybe, maybe we're gonna put them down below. There are other people that are gonna probably affect their project.
But that, that was my question regarding the ARPA, the, one of the four things I always bother you about. Two of them are, one is the ARPA funds from Chester County.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? And that would go towards the reservoir.
I requested one point five million dollars and that would go to Milltown Dam.
What's our status on knowing anything about that?
Then last they told me was the end of September. They keep shifting it, the goalpost.
And what was, and the other one that's the million dollars that we requested is from who again?
It's about a million dollars total for projects. It was the um, the local, local share fund.
That's right.
Which is the state gaming.
Great if they come through, that would be a real, uh, real benefit.
That could be enough to fund the Milltown Dam Park.
Well, we would have to use the, the local service funds to, to pay for the ones that we applied for there. So, so that was the.
You split that up into.
That was UV, that was uh, Hershey Mill, uh, and Oak Tree Pond.
Oh, right, 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 okay.
I went out for a couple different ones there, really hoping Chester County comes through because one and a half million dollars if they did it all would, would significantly cut down on the capital.
Which would be great, but that's, you know what, we're, yeah.
I mean, it costs this much and we've already got. This is the amount outstanding after almost a million dollars worth of grants that we did get.
Right.
And our second, our second half of the COVID money went right in and went right out.
Right back out to.
That was for the West Town Pump Station or.
Nine hundred and thirteen thousand.
So.
So in a perfect world, though, let's say the P L E pipe, I'm just throwing out numbers here, okay? So one of the suggestions, it was like what, two point two million?
Two, yeah.
So hypothetically, if that was down to two point two, that subtracts two million in a perfect world, they say we get that million and a half dollar grant.
We we might be able to bridge the gap effectively to at least. Get underway and 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 you know, the Milltown Dan Park, you know, I you and I were talking about that and I've mentioned this before. When we go out to bid for it. All of those design elements that um the accoutrements with with beyond the basic restoration of the of the area. Uh should be set up as options so that when the debt comes in and then. In the years ahead, just the way we did with East Ocean Township Park. Perennially add an improvement here or there as we can afford it, but but we. There's I don't think there's any way with what was designed and engineered that we we can begin to think about affording it once the price tag comes in on the on the uh actual bids. So.
So I'd like to actually move back to the um conclusion and options page. Um aside from I I I don't wanna get in.
Or the other, the other.
Uh the conclusion and option. Yes, page eleven. Um I'd like to go back to that and. The first two items notwithstanding, I I I don't wanna argue that tonight. Um I wanna think about that, but. Um I'd like to go down the rest of the 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 list. I I think that there's some stuff here that we can potentially. Find a little bit of room to. You know, maybe we can tweak a little bit and shave a little bit here and there, but. We also have to determine what's important to our residents and we have. One resident here in the room uh besides ourselves. And um so I'd like to at least start with that fifty thousand dollars, um examine the fire EMS budget. Do we reduce that from five hundred to four fifty or do we do we think that that is? Not worth touching. It's that's emergency services.
Well, let me let me comment on that right off the bat. We've we've heard from good fellowship ambulance, we we um. Grant is here, we know the Goshen Fire Company. Um the services that it provides, they're both essential services. We know that their their budgets uh are under stress. We know the whole uh recent history now that's become. Uh the last almost two decades of the decrease in volunteer firefighting firefighters. Um the cost going up more career firefighters. So that uh it's becoming more of a professional and not volunteer outfit to the chagrin of Ben Franklin. Um and uh these these are costs that are essential. Um and if they um uh are operating and telling us what they need and and they're having the gaps they have. It's an essential service that I think uh we we have to be respectful of. Um and and as we said to Kim and um. Um uh not Josh.
Chad.
Chad. You know, w- w- we can't fill that gap right away, but I think we can start to pinch away at it. And um so that maybe there's a pinch here that we can have a a middle middle ground grants here. I don't know what your thoughts are, Grant.
What do you think?
That that's why I was gonna ask Grant, cause he.
He was good enough to come in on Monday and we talked through some stuffs and that's why he's here tonight. If you guys wanna ask.
Yeah, no, I have a couple of questions just.
Coming up to the microphone so that anybody who's watching this recording can hear the answers, please.
And Grant, just specifically, I'm just interested in seventy one thousand dollar increase, which is a twenty percent increase. What that like what that?
So the the bulk of that. Um. Similar to the township, we fund our capital. Um. Funds through our operating expense budget. Um and typically. Our our apparatus fund is calculated out for twenty twenty five years, so we know what we'll be spending. You know, in the future. And to properly fund that, we really need to put in twenty thousand dollars a month, two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Um we have a building that hasn't been touched since nineteen ninety three. It's in dire need of expansion, renovation, replacement. Something to accommodate things like live in programs and and those kinds of things to bolster our our volunteer staffing. Um we 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 should be putting in ten thousand dollars a month into that fund or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Um we have stopped funding the building fund and we've cut the apparatus funding in half. In order to make ends meet on the operating expense.
And when did you do that?
Uh two years ago.
Okay.
We've. I can I can double check.
So this isn't even bringing you up to date. This is just kind of. This is just trying, you're just trying to start to catch up again.
Yeah, so in order to um. Try to hit our forecast on the apparatus side. Um we've extended our replacement schedule for the apparatus. We we were replacing it ten years. Now we've pushed it fifteen and twenty years.
Hmm.
Um.
Wait, say that again before the ten, I'm sorry, missed that.
We were uh. Few years ago, we were replacing apparatus every ten years. Um we have now kicked that out to fifteen to twenty years um in order to try to stretch our our money. Um we have two pieces of apparatus due to be replaced in twenty twenty four. We've made the decision to only replace one of them and combine them into one multi-function unit, which will. Take a significant amount of capital um pressure off of that fund. So we're doing things to try to manage, but we're still, we're still short.
Okay.
So the seventy one thousand dollars is trying to get us back to. Where we need to be, particularly in capital. We still face headwinds with. You know, annual salary increases, the healthcare costs hit us, it's just like they do the township.
Um. Have you asked other townships as well to increase their contributions?
We are actively, you may be aware that the West Ocean Fire EMS Coalition, uh we're meeting with them monthly now, which we never did before. We're having this exact conversation with West Ocean. Um we haven't really talked to West West Town yet.
Okay.
And actually, when we look at our funding model, our funding formula, Willistown is actually. In pretty good shape in terms of um the area we cover and the number of calls in their district. They're they're pretty on point with what they're giving us.
Okay.
They do a similar formula, sorry, Grant, that that um good fellowship presented.
Okay, good.
Population based as well as the coverage that they provide.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's a great explanation.
Thank you.
And and also it mimics. Exactly what we're talking about here in East Goshen with or with with our capital funding and the the importance. I'm paying attention to it.
Uh Grant, I've been a couple other questions where I save you, save you from a call for me tomorrow morning. That Dave and Derek have to deal with daily. Um the my other question for you, so the building fund that obviously is a priority for you guys, what is the status of? It would it would be helpful, maybe just for all of us, like what what you guys are looking for, like. How quick we can we can be, you know, a partner with you and helping renovate that? What's that look like?
So so um.
I know COVID's a wrench in a lot of things, so.
So we have been planning for this for probably the last ten years. And when we could fund our our transfer money, if we had a surplus, we would put it in the building fund. The building fund. Uh I probably should have looked, it it was three million.
Mm hmm.
Um I imagine a lot of it's based on, it's in investments, so we've taken a little bit of a hit this year. It'll recover, it always does.
Um. Put about three million.
About three, three millions, they're a talking point.
Mm hmm.
Um. And we were looking at a six million dollar project.
Right.
Um but we were gonna go after Iraq P grant, we were gonna, you know, shake the trees, try to get as much money as we can. Uh Brumoff Fire Company got three million from Iraq P. Um so we were gonna really do the legwork and try to fund the other half of the project. Talked to the architects, our six million dollar projects now at nine million dollars.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
So.
Not surprised.
We've we've parked it. Wait for things to kind of settle down um and uh. You know, hopefully. We'll be able to sort of re-energize the project by the end of the year when the economy settles down, but that's where we are.
That's helpful, yeah. Once you get an update on that, that'd be extremely helpful for us, cause I want us to be partner in that.
Thank you. Any other questions, Cody?
So I'm done drilling.
Does anybody else have any great questions?
Grant, any opportunity to do a just a capital fund raise, you know, dedicated capital fundraises?
So we've we've talked about um doing a capital drive. Uh we did it, we did one when we built Station Fifty Six on Boot Road. Um our experience is is people donate to the capital fund and we see a drop in our. You know, our general.
Annual service.
You know, it's.
Subscription.
Money moves from one hand to the other.
Yeah.
Um it but it's 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 not off the table. Um well, you know. Um we probably would do a little bit of that. You know, solicit our residents, just to.
But realistically, a capital fund drive. Maybe you get a hundred thousand, maybe you get fifty, we're not. I I hate to say it's small change, but in the in these big numbers and as we, you know, as I'm looking down the list here. We're starting, they're they're nickels and dimes, five thousand here, five thousand there.
But still five thousand here and five thousand.
Oh, I know, it adds up.
Do you think that is part of your annual membership drive that you would just be able to? I but I feel like you already have some component of, here's the annual drive. Membership, the annual membership drive number, anything above that.
Yes, so we do that.
You do that anyway, right?
Yeah, so when we send out our ambulance subscription drive, uh we ask for a capital donation on top of it because.
Yeah.
The purchase of a subscription is not technically a donation.
Right.
Ask your accountant.
Right.
Um but uh so the split is usually. Three hundred and twenty five to three hundred and fifty thousand in in subscriptions. And seventy seventy to seventy five per year in the capital donation.
Okay.
One thing that I did talk with Grant about, um and I really appreciated him coming by on Monday, was um. Looking at from a taxpayer perspective and different services, as we were talking about, some people use the parks, some people use the trail.
Mm hmm.
Their number one spot where they go is Hershey Mill Village. And. We don't plow their stuff except when Mark has.
Yeah.
Already done the our roads, um they have their own paving, they've got their own sewer. So. It's just kind of interesting to see that they're, they would be benefactors of that kind of a service.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Grant.
All right, so. Can we consider, we we have a a fifty percent in, well, we're looking at a hundred percent increase. From the, was it good fellowship, was it?
Good fellowship, yeah.
Uh I mean, I I. Everybody's got a budget problem this year. We can't be the budget fixer for everybody. Um.
No, and we, depending on what we, if we wanted to reduce the total budget, it would be which, where do we reduce it from and where do we?
Right.
More support.
I think this is a good uh. Not segue, but good time, since you're talking about specific line items and looking at the expenses we could consider. And Madam Chair, more than happy to keep going here, but I think we all, what we also are going to do is offline and we did this last year and I found it helpful. Even though we have our uh public budget meetings scheduled and 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 ready to go. Um meeting with one or two board members at a time, obviously not to uh evade sunshine. So one or two at a time, come in. Meet with Dave and I so we can get feedback on specific line items, both from a revenue and expense uh perspective. Over the next four or five weeks. So when we get to the point of the Q and A in October eighteenth and then to November fifteenth. Uh we have your line item feedback individually um as well. And obviously more than happy to go through it in public too, but I'm just just letting you know it'll be ample opportunity for for private one on ones as well.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and we welcome um phone calls, emails, whatever, as far as resident and business owner input, and that we're all stakeholders, so.
Of course.
Sure.
All right, well then, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'm just gonna quickly go down this list and tell you a couple of things that are just. Just not acceptable to me.
Okay.
Uh it's not acceptable to be to reduce employee wages, period. That's just not acceptable. I can't get behind that at all. Um we've we've put off a D A B C celebration. And we need to change that. We need to do it at a different time of the year, so it's not gonna cost us fifteen thousand dollars. I'd like to see us spending about no more than five thousand. That's where I am on that. Um I still think that we need to keep the uh newsletter out of print for the for the time being. Um. I don't think that we should be reducing our paving schedule at this point any further. I don't wanna reduce our tree removal budget. Um.
Where's the tree uh uh?
Tree.
Futures, where where are you there?
Uh remove. I skipped up to the paving, cause I forgot to mention.
We got, got you.
In fact, paving and snow removal, I don't wanna reduce them. Either one of them. Um.
I'm with you.
I I hate to completely remove the roadside littering pickup, so I'd like to maybe consider halving that. Okay.
Is it worth it?
Yeah.
To have them?
It it is.
Yeah, no, I saw one, cause you guys are the ones that.
The last time we. Some someone on the board recommended reducing this snow removal budget. We had a.
It was a bad idea.
Let's make sure that person doesn't recommend that.
Even if that person does, we're not gonna let that happen. Um but that's okay, Mike, we were not gonna point anybody out.
Yeah.
We're not gonna point anybody out for that. Um. Those are just a couple of things that are really, I I have a hard time with, I I.
I agree with you on on all of those.
I I wanna and I wanna give the Valverde Library, the Valverde Library what they asked for, but not the extra five K right now. Um I don't wanna eliminate the conservancy budget, but I would consider halving it. Um. I would consider. Um. Eliminating the historical budget because they haven't done anything the past couple of years anyway. And removing the futurist uh street tree request as well. Or at least halving that. So those are some of the things that I'm I'm looking at just for nickels and dimes. Um I don't want to. Further reduce our paving because we did that last year and and I don't wanna go to eighteen or. I don't I don't wanna go from eighteen to nineteen or twenty years to to replace the the streets. I think that that's a mistake. Um it's it's a, our roads are great. Our roads are terrific and Mark takes really good care of them. Um the guys know where every manhole is so that they don't. Have injury to person or or um. Uh property when they're doing their snow removal. Um.
Just a note on the historical budget. Um this is a thousand dollars of that is for the um blacksmith supplies, just penciled that number in.
I was gonna ask about that, if that was part of that.
That was, that's part of it and uh he typically will generate close to the same revenue, so he's usually a net net and. Gary's a great guy and I don't know how much longer he's gonna keep doing it, but um we even, Jason and I were suggesting maybe he could do it and get an intern or something.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Apprentice.
Apprentice, there you go.
There we go.
Um and then the rest is really um, it's the cleaning and um what else were we gonna do over there, Mark? In the plank house and uh blacksmith shop. Yeah. Cleaning service, right?
Yeah, I mean. Those are just some of my thoughts, so I don't I don't wanna completely eliminate things.
Yeah.
If we can help it, but I also want to be mindful of. What we have that we're working with, if we can find some nickels and dimes here and there, I think it will help overall. Especially because then no one will feel completely slighted.
Right, yeah, and I and I appreciate that. I, you know, wh- when we look at lists like this. And then we look at some of these big numbers. Again, I'm gonna bring it up again, the the uh cost of living. Inflation is gonna forty eight percent. The chart that I have here. Uh oh, since the last tax increase we had. We. Uh.
It's only ever been one.
These are all about not, you know, decreasing services of some type. Um when the when our staff comes to us with um. Our our township staff comes to us with requests. I I have complete confidence and faith and and what they're requesting is something that they need. Uh I don't see fluff, we maintaining our facilities, we're maintaining our our roads and services we provide. And um I hate to say it, uh but I don't hate to say it because the reality is. Uh our revenues are not able to keep up with our expenses, which are legitimate. And it the time has come, in my opinion, that we're going to have to have a millage increase and I'm gonna suggest it's gonna. For my vote, uh we need one to start in twenty three. So I'm gonna leave it at that.
What what millage are you looking at?
Well, if you look at a a point two five uh of a mil, that's uh I think about four hundred thousand dollars. Um and if we could um. Improve some of the optimism, a little bit of optimism in our. Um revenue projections and I like to be conservative as well. We may be able to close the gap significantly from seven hundred and forty one, we take it, uh say we have a twenty five mil. Uh increase, uh point two five mil increase, takes four hundred thousand, so we're down to three forty one. We could reduce our uh or increase our revenue to twenty by a couple hundred thousand maybe uh out of it. Um no little less maybe, but uh for uncertain income, we could bring that up a hundred thousand, I think, from from what I've seen. Um then with one of the tenants, again, that I have, tenants uh that I have, is that the general fund to close uh using. Uh, using our equity, fund equity, our fund balance to close the deficit gap. It would be within that range of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less relative to what our fund balance is. Um, and our fund balance policy that we need to maintain, so. I, I don't see how we're going to effectively. Balance our budget without, uh, now finally the need after twenty years to, to increase our, our taxes. And, and reflect where, where we've lagged in not keeping up with inflation, uh, through the cost of services. And now equipment in our infrastructure, which is so important with a future look. That's where I, I am at the moment.
I'm, uh, uh, I, I look at a recipe, you know, for the budget, so increase revenue. Decrease expenses, use surplus of reserves, increase taxes or borrow. For me, that's, you know, that, that's the only. The five things you can do, right? Uh, I think that we're demonstrating that increasing revenue, we're looking at pretty much flat now and going forward, right? Um, decreasing expenses, I mean, we're looking at, you know, five thousand bucks here, five thousand dollars there. Uh, I, I agree with Mike's statement. You know, I have confidence in our staff. Uh, I haven't seen us ever fluffing budgets and sandbagging and buying unnecessary things. Um, and we've been prudent in funding our capital expenses through our, you know, depreciation and, and, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, before, we used to use surplus and reserve to balance the budget in, in fairly large amounts. And for the last couple of years, we've been balancing that budget. We still can use some of that surplus and reserve. We don't wanna borrow necessarily unless we really have to, and the only other bucket left is a reasonable increase in taxes. And we haven't had a millage increase in how many years?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, twenty years.
Dave, what, what, I'm sorry. I thought you were done, David. I'm sorry.
And just, just so you know, if you're interested, uh, and me, and I'll send it to the board, I do have the letter. From the Board of Supervisors from November twentieth, two thousand and three, that explains. Why in two thousand and four preliminary budget, they have now approved a, uh, it was a one point oh mil real estate tax increase. It ended up being one point two-five, but here was the explanation. And it was interesting to see there's some things that are, were, were echoing what was said back then. Uh, twenty, uh, essentially, almost twenty years ago now.
I'd be interested in some of that.
Yeah.
Um, Dave, would you tell us, please, um, if we were to be looking at. Um, a millage increase of point two-five or point three, um, what does that do for us in the coming years? Um, will you be able to work with that, or are we gonna be looking at another increase in two years?
Um, we could be. It's, it's really dependent upon inflation rates. Um, what the WIGO budget does in future years and. And revenue performance, especially EIT and, and sales. Um. Yeah, that's kind of why I had the one slide and the additional to show. Regardless, if those kind of expenses and inflation stays at that rate, it's gonna go up four hundred thousand every year. We're gonna have a gap. But we do find expense cuts certain places. We do find, um. A budget surplus here or there, and, um, you know, we don't wanna just take one huge swipe in an apple and. And hope that that fixes everything. It'd be nice to, to play it along and see. Um, what other things we can tweak going forward so that you don't have to make such a huge impact right now?
I, um, and, and I will say that I, I am, um. I am more supportive of a, um, a sched- scheduled. I, i- i- smaller increases.
Like based in.
We may need a point two-five in another year or two more years. Uh, forget twenty-three, but in twenty-four, twenty-five. And if you go for what I refer to as a one-time long time, and say we, we went to increase it. By a half a mil this year for twenty-three or even more. That you kind of, you bit that big chunk of the apple, whereas if you take an incremental, you see how you perform the next year. What the forecast looks like for the following year, in this case, twenty-three, then into twenty-four. Then you can, you can have another step forward, but you haven't taken a big number, and then you look, you go, oh, maybe we didn't need quite as much. That soon, and that's the interesting thing about what the school district has done and, and Chester County over time. They have had these incremental increases, which I appreciate. Um, and if we wanted to, to look at it on an annual basis, no, no elected official likes to think about annual tax increases, but. We get them from Verizon, we get them from Aqua, we get them from just about everybody, and no one says too much about that. But here, we're always reticent to do it, and when we look at some of our neighbors. East Bradford Township is now at one point seven-five mils. Um, Westchester Borough, which that's a bit different, but they're in our school district. They're at seven point seven mils. West Goshen Township, which we've often looked at, is really quite well to do. They're at two point oh mils. Westtown Township, our partner with WIGO, is at three point five mils. Um, now, West Whiteland Township, they're at point seven mils. Why?
Hmm.
Do you want West White on township here? I don't think so. Um, we, so obviously they have a strong base. Um, but we, and West, you know, I go to West White on Township and there's all nice Whole Foods and everything. It's great, but. Not, that's not what we want to be and nor have we planned to be that. West White on Township planned that. To occur, and we'll get their plan from fifteen, twenty years ago. Um, so, and Thornbury Township is at point, well, they're about at one point oh mil. I'll be really surprised if any of these municipalities, um, maintain those, those millage rates for next year. I think they're all under a real pressure. Now, that said. Our Westchester area school district, let's not forget, um, is it now at twenty-two point four-three mils? Um, and by the way, the Westchester area school district has the lowest millage. Of every school district in the county. And when you look at places like Coachville that has a forty-one mil. When you look at, um, Oxford at thirty-four mils. When you look at, um, um, Octorera is at forty, almost forty-two mils.
Wow.
And then we, we're talking about things like SROs. I think that organization can afford an SRO better than we can, uh, at twenty-two mils versus some what we see elsewhere.
And, and they, and they keep increasing it by a percent or three every year. And with the Act One indexes.
And the Chester County, uh, millage right now is four, four point five-five. So, um, what do we get in East Goshen Township as a resident? Um, we can touch a lot of what we receive. We can't necessarily touch. Uh, I know my, my kids never touched Westchester area school district, and there are a lot of Hershey's Mill Village residents. Who, who have not ever had, but they're paying the school taxes too, so you try and. You know, it's not rationalizing, it's just putting the, the pieces of the, that, that, uh, puzzle together and saying. A, a tax increase here is not highway robbery. It, it is reality and it's, and it's reasonable. So that's, that's, that's all I'm gonna say tonight, period.
Thanks, Mike.
So we have Mark Miller here. Mark, did you wanna get up and. Give us any kind of. Information or you just kind of watching, listening?
Yeah, I did get, um, as, as I will every year, get Mark's, uh, input on public works, projects, cost of materials, everything. He takes a, a good, hard look at all of my numbers that I come up with preliminarily, and then, um, fine tunes them with what he knows is going on. And what stuff's actually costing. Um, and then also the big projects that are on the horizon, how much they cost now, fuel costs, what the guys are up to, everything like that, so. Uh, and Jason looks at the park ones for me, and pretty much a collaborative effort, so.
Yeah, on that note, Madam Chair, I, I did wanna take a second before we continue to thank Dave for all this. He, he has put in a lot of work on the budget front. I think when Dave and I came in, uh, in twenty-twenty-one. We sort of got together and wanted to put our own philosophical stamp on how we move forward in the budget process. And I think the one thing we both emphasize is we wanna as much information out there as possible, as early as possible, so that we're not sitting here. Or five days before Christmas with a roomful of people saying, they, they don't know what, what was happening with the budget for the last three months. Um, so I think, you know, we, that's kind of why we put this sort of program together to have these budget meetings. Earlier on and, and have the process play out the way we, uh, the way we, we have. And, uh, Dave's been great because I kind of put that framework out there, but then he's kind of the one that's filling in the, on, on this level. And it's, it's been great to see, and I appreciate the work he's put in.
I didn't copy the whole word on my email back to Dave and Derek when I got the budget packet. Week, uh, but it's the best budget package, the clearest.
I agree.
Budget packet I have ever gotten in the last five years I've been on the board.
I agree.
And I really complimented them on that.
I, I did the same, so.
Appreciate it.
I did, and I didn't include everybody on it. I just, just really.
Probably had, Chris probably had a role in this.
Always.
But I know they've been working hard at it. In fact, I, I finished a municipal authority meeting here last night, and we're, we're leaving. Talking with Dana at the, the exit door, and, uh, it's eight-thirty, whatever it was, quarter to nine, and, and. Derek comes out of the, the door and it's like, what are you, I said, what, what did you, you take a break from your cot or what back there? So, and these guys, these guys work hard, um, so, um, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to make a comment real quick. Can't believe Mike and David are packing up before I am. I'm usually the first one. Uh, but since they gave their, where they're at right now on everything, I thought I'd give my two cents, since we're all just throwing it out there. I'm right now at the one-time long time phase. I'm just worried if it's point two-five, if we, it's just too little. And that I, I'm not a fan of, like, each year, I'd rather be able to, just because of the big expenses that we have outstanding.
Yeah.
With like the reservoir, and I know the trail's not a necessity, but at some point it has to be addressed.
Yeah.
And some of our other shortfalls, making sure that our first responders have the resources they need, so. I'm not a fan of the smaller, over the next couple of years, I'd rather take one big bite at the apple. Because I don't want us to do a small one, and then we're still short for next year, and then we have to dip into reserves, and then we have to end up doing a bigger one the next year, so. That's where I'm at right now.
Uh, uh, I'm, and I'm kind of ambivalent right now. I'm, I'm undecided. I'm on the fence. Um, but what might be helpful is, can you, uh, I think it would be fairly simple to maybe model, um, the scenarios of.
Of. Point one, point two-five, point five.
What it would look like, and some of the, similar to some of the stuff you've already done.
Yeah, I basically have a full-on range plan. I'll just modify it.
That'd be great.
Okay. Um, are there any, um, I'm gonna move forward then and ask if there are any public comments. Joe, do you have any comments? Okay, anybody else? And there's nobody in our Zoom room. Hopefully some people will be watching this on the recording. Um, so I think that brings us to the most exciting time of the evening.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
So moved, and we will adjourn. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle.
Wow.